Okay, I am showing it's 5:30, so we will go ahead and call the Livingston County Board of Commissioners meeting, January 3, 2022. We'll call that to order. Happy New Year to everyone. I hope 2022 brings a very good year for all of us and good riddance to 2021. So, please join me in a moment of silent reflection. Okay, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll take roll call. Commissioner Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Reader.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman.
Present.
Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioners Ajax.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Gross is absent and Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Coram is present. We do have correspondence. Today, we have correspondence by Eaton County. It's Resolution 21-12-125 to condemn federal vaccine and testing mandates. I would be looking for a motion to receive and place the correspondence on file.
Support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Plank and support by Commissioners Ajax. Any comments or input on this correspondence? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will move on to the call to the public. This is the first call to the public. And there are two on this agenda. Anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. You will be limited to three minutes. So if there's anyone from the public who would like to, please come on up.
Madam Clerk, I would like to say something with all the public if I could.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Helserman.
This being our first meeting, I have a friend, Dave Roddy. He had told me that he wanted to come to say a prayer for our year. But sad to say, a couple of weeks ago, he came down with COVID. And right now, he is in Owasso Memorial Hospital, just having quite a time. I don't know if we'd say he's fighting for his life, but he's fighting for his health at least. And so I would like to, on his behalf, say a prayer for our commission for the year. Our Father, we thank you so much for Livingston County. Thank you for these that have been elected to serve. And I pray that your blessing will be upon each elected official here. Not just the ones that are sitting here as commissioners, but those that have other elected positions in our county. That you would bless each one and give each one of us the wisdom that we need for our job in front of us so that we will not do our will, but do what is best for the county and best for the people and therefore be doing your will. And I ask for my friend, Dave Roddy, that you would lift him up, that you would heal him and perform that miracle in his life. And there are many others that may have friends that are in similar situations. We ask the same for them. Thank you for all of us in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? You look to have some pretty nice goodies there. If you could just provide your name in either a city or township, please. Thank you.
Good evening. Happy New Year. I don't know if I need this. Just wanted Mary Robinson, Livingston County Convention and Visitors Bureau. I just wanted to drop in because I am dropping off these wonderful newly branded cupcakes to everyone, including Police Department, Health Department, and everyone else. And I just wanted to let you know that I'd like to get on the agenda. Of course, I will. In 2022, to tell you about the new brand, Explore Brighton Howell Area. So I've got the shirt on, got a pen for everyone, cupcakes for everybody. We're very excited about this new brand. It's the first time that we've rebranded in 30 years. So it's very exciting. It comes with new videos, images, all kinds of new content and fun, exciting stuff. So I'll be back. Just wanted to say Happy New Year and drop off some goodies. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
It goes at New Year's resolution. I guess I'll walk over there.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Just wanted to point out for our administrator's sake that the colors on the cupcakes are excellent.
The shirt too.
I don't see red and white. I kind of like the green and white, so that's a good thing. Go ahead.
I think our administrator missed that one, so you may want to say it again.
I think he's trying to miss that one.
I think he's ignoring. I'm sorry, Chuck.
Andy. I'd like to recommend that the commission elect the new chairperson, be Commissioner Plank. I've watched Commissioner Plank over the year. It's been a busy year, obviously. And I think she listens to the people that come to talk and understand what is they're saying and has a good comprehension of what the county needs. So I'd like you to elect her as chairperson.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the board chambers who would like to address the Board of Commissioners? Okay, we will move to Zoom. Is there anyone on the Zoom platform wishing to address the Board of Commissioners? Please use your raise hand function. Not seeing any, we will go ahead and close this first call to the public and we'll move to approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. We have minutes of the meeting dated December 13, 2021, as well as the minutes of the meeting dated December 22, 2021. I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes. So moved Reader.
Court Helserman.
We have a motion by Commissioner Reader, almost called you Judge Reader, and then support by Commissioner Helserman. Is there any changes or corrections that need made to the minutes? That's a good thing. So all of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no tabled items from previous minutes or meetings, so we will move on to approval of the agenda.
So moved Griffith.
Support Plank.
We have a motion and support. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any reports this evening? Are there any commissioners with reports? Yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with my colleagues and the staff that I spoke with Cole Stoker today regarding, you know, the commissioners have to participate in person. There's, but I asked the specific question, does that mean you can't vote? And does that also mean that you cannot, you know, participate in the deliberation and the discussion? So the answer is you cannot participate nor can you vote if you are absent but are participating by Zoom. So I just wanted to share that message that I had got from Cole Stoker. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioners with reports?
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
This is maybe out of order, but I will consider it a report. It's kind of my overview of what one of the things, major things we're considering today. And so I'll read it to you. Change is necessary. People who set up our present format made a workable package that has proven itself over a long period of time. The goal of the change is seems to be shorten the deliberation process and eliminate Wednesday meetings. Historically, my historic perspective, the Wednesday morning meetings have been the county family time as I viewed it before, that's before Zoom. Before Zoom, there was times when we had more freedom to have conversations with our directors and elected officials that are necessary for good county government. Some of these comments might have been misunderstood or misused by the enemies of good if they had been said in the presence of the broader public. When considering what is the most important function of commissioners, some would rightly say that establishing the budget would be the single biggest responsibility of the nine of us. The Finance Chair has had a large responsibility to give guidance to the budget process. The budgets process seems to have lost their prominence in this new plan, so far as I can see. The normal flow of power in government over time is for elected officials to hire people that, in general, we call them the bureaucracy, we don't use that word in Livingston County, to do the work that the elected officials have their primary responsibility to perform. The fewer meetings we have, the more work and decisions will be placed upon our capable staff members. This drift of government makes elected officials less relevant. As the county grows, we will of necessity need to change the setup and organization of our board and administrative staff. We must remember that we are not alone in governing Livingston County. All other elected people have direct authority in their own field. The commissioner's position only has power as part of a whole with no direct personal responsibilities. The changes that we make to the established system cannot rightfully be made without considering the impact to our customers who are the bosses in their own right in their own areas. Part of the secret to the success of Livingston County is exercising authority with humility. That means each fulfilling their role with full consideration of the roles and contribution of other players. If our ultimate goal is to eliminate unnecessary steps, we could send all resolutions passed unanimously by committee straight to the full board, unless the Chair of the Finance Committee requests an additional hearing at his or her committee. The changes proposed, though through taking away Wednesday meeting, would make every Monday meeting, all of our Monday meetings, very much longer. And only a third consideration would be able to be done if we would table an item for further consideration. The third consideration should be easier to request than that. If this passes tonight, we must have full recognition. I would, if a change is passed tonight, I would recommend that we have a full reconsideration in April with full participation of all the stakeholders who present and interact with our board during our meetings. COVID has been enough of a shock to our county government, and we do not need another stress on our system that is not a clear improvement. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Is there anyone else who has a report at this time? If not, I think that we'll have that will allow you to have further discussion on that matter under the appropriate resolution. Seeing none, we will move on to approval of the consent agenda, which there is nothing to approve on that. So we'll get down to our first resolution for consideration, Resolution 2022-01-001, Election of Board Chair for 2022. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for Chair of the Board of Commissioners for 2022. I'm not going to be your chair this year, so I would recommend somebody come forward with a nomination.
Madam Clerk, I would take the advice of my constituent and nominate Brenda Plank.
So Commissioner Helserman nominates Commissioner Plank. Are there any other nominations?
Madam Clerk, I'll recommend Commissioner Nakagiri.
Commissioners Ajax has recommended Commissioner Nakagiri for Board Chair. Are there any further nominations?
Support Plank.
Okay, at this point in time then, since we have more than one nomination, I will do a roll call vote in the order that the nominations were received. So.
Madam Clerk, it's been our practice to take a roll call vote and name the person that we are for. I don't know whether we can do that, if that conforms to Robert's Rules of Order, as opposed to take a vote on each. But I guess whichever way you want to do it is fine.
I see Matt Nordford just decided to appear on the screen. So Matt, do you have a preference on how this is handled at this point?
Procedurally, either way will work. I just wanted to chime in and say whichever you prefer, chairing the meeting will work.
Okay, at this point in time then, we have two nominations. And I will roll call the commissioners and please express the candidate of your choice. Either it's going to be Commissioner Plank or Commissioner Nakagiri. So Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Commissioner Reader.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Good to know you'd like it. Commissioners Ajax.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Commissioner Drick.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Commissioner Griffith.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Commissioner Gross is absent. Commissioner Plank.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
And Commissioner Helserman.
I will join the majority. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Well, we have a unanimous vote with one absent for Commissioner Nakagiri, so I will congratulate you on your appointment as Board Chair for 2022, and I will kindly hand the meeting over to you.
Thank you very much. You did a great job of being the clerk in the chair. And I thought, wow, she's putting me to shame there. But no, yeah, I appreciate the support and look forward to a prosperous 2022 year. So continuing on with the agenda, we're at Resolution 2022-01-002, selection of the Board Vice Chair for 2022, looking for nominations. As, I don't know if I should do this or not, as Board Chair, I would like to renominate Carol Griffiths.
I move nominations be closed.
Support.
The, so there's a motion and support. Any discussion on closing the nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So now we go to vote for election of Board Vice Chair, Carol Griffiths. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve again.
Resolution 2022-01-003 is resolution adopting rules for the County Board of Commissioners and establish meeting dates for 2022. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the status quo version of the minutes, of the rules, and work on changes to that, if there are any.
There's a motion to adopt the status quo proposal. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman for the status quo proposal, support by Commissioner Griffiths. Any discussion on the status quo proposal?
I will talk a little bit about that. I think that, and we have three electeds here, and I have not had a chance to poll them to see how they figured that this would affect them. I would be interested to open the floor to their comments on the changes. In my mind, it's kind of, it's like having a balloon. There's, we have so much contents in the balloon. If you squeeze the balloon in one place, you'll have less there, but then you're going to have more in another place. And I think that, in my mind, there is room for change. I don't doubt that. But I think the format is good. I do not mind Wednesday morning meetings. So that's kind of where I am.
Any further discussion? Commissioners Ajax.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I heard the report from Commissioner Helserman, and I made some notes, and I'll also give my thoughts on the proposal. I think that the status quo proposal is just that, status quo. And it was adopted in a time when perhaps leadership of the county at the administration level was different and board structure was different. And I read it as, having experienced it now for a year, a way to, for whatever reason, have multiple decision points when I think one will do. I spoke to a former commissioner that was around during the time of the adoption of this status quo proposal, polling what the importance of the Finance Committee meetings was, and it was to drive expedient approval of payables and to take consideration of things like payment of court costs and fees to those who maybe do and other activities in a regular occurring manner. That is not a need for redundancy, which is what I've come to see the Finance Committee. As I know, I was the Finance Committee Chair, and I'm calling my role perhaps just one to wear the title, but I'm not sure what I helped get done in that sense, because everything had to go to general government and it had to go to public safety. And then it goes on to an ultimate decision-making by the full board. So the comment about reducing deliberation, I don't see as fitting here because the introduction will still occur in a committee, in the, I'll call it the Nakagiri proposal, and it would occur in the status quo proposal. The only change, as I've read the Nakagiri proposal compared to the status quo proposal, is just a restructuring of the Finance Committee to deal with what appears to me to be more strategic, longer-reaching items. Things that we've heard from our constituency have not been addressed in a timely fashion, and I think this is a good attempt at driving those items to be considered. Removing the prominence of the budget process, I actually think that this new committee will drive more focus by at least the commissioners involved in the committee, focusing on strategic items like the preparation of the budget, multi-year impacts, looking at strategic plan, understanding the capital improvement plan and its impact on budget. We had the Clerk's proposal come through for elections at the end of the term, or at the end of the year last year, and there was comments by many colleagues of mine about how does this interplay with the capital improvement plan? And there was discussion about how it ties into the strategic plan. This committee has drafted, I believe, would be able to cut off those concerns in a very clear way, not to have them not occur, but to do it in a very concise and perhaps more straightforward approach. Looking at the impact of departments, I have polled some of the members of the elected body that are within this room, and I've also polled others, as I mentioned, that are not here in this room. I got the permission of our prosecutor to use his name specifically. He is in favor, as a former commissioner, I think his opinion is important, and he is in favor of removing redundancy, and he's one that deals with finance on a regular basis. So I thought that was important to share. The impact on Mondays, I don't see how this will impact Monday meetings. The same introduction and deliberation will occur in committee as it does today. And instead of having it occur in a Finance Committee meeting and then the same discussion opportunity occur in a full board meeting four days later, we will go with a full week between introduction to final approval to perhaps enable departments to do more of follow-up work, if there is any, or to answer any open questions. I don't see that this introduction change from status quo to the Nakagiri proposal would affect the opportunity to discuss and reconsider items. Certainly, our board rules and the Robert's Rules of Order have a very prominent way to ask for staying of a conversation, whether it be through tabling an item or asking for reconsideration in general in a following meeting. So while it may not be a tool oft exercised, it's certainly one within our arsenal that we may use. So this status quo, I don't see as moving the ball and addressing some of the many important issues that we need to address in a structured way, whereas the Nakagiri proposal, in my view, is the efficient way to do this, not because it reduces Wednesday morning meetings. I think it's just by happenstance that that's a benefit, so as not to take away the staff from doing their daily jobs in order to sit through our meetings. I think that's all my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further comments on the status quo proposal? We have a motion and support. All those in favor of the status quo proposal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. The motion for that status quo proposal fails seven to one. Is there a motion for the new proposal?
So move Plank.
Support Ajax.
Motion by Commissioner Plank, support by Commissioners Ajax. Any discussion on the new proposal? Commissioner Griffiths.
I'd just like to know, have the courts been discussed about the new change? Being here long enough for the 10 years, I know at one point in time we actually put the courts on the agenda for the Finance Committee because it needed more time, because they had a lot of grants that came before us and a lot of business to be more vetted out. We moved that to the Wednesday meeting, so I'm just wondering if they've been consulted on this new plan.
I have not consulted the courts on the plan, and so.
Mr. Chair. Respond to her question.
Yes.
I've had conversation with the Chief Judge, not to say, do you approve or disapprove, but I can say that our discussions have not, there's not been a glaring, this is a terrible idea, if that makes sense.
Okay, I just like to know. And then also, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry. My second question would be, on this plan, if we're into discussing what is in the plan, my concern, one of my concerns is, again, it's back to the Finance Asset Management Committee. While I think that's fine to give up a Wednesday morning and try to encourage Monday meetings as we just voted on, I do have a concern here under, we have here, for instance, I understand the matters to be reviewed by the Finance Asset Management Committee. One of those is the compensation study. I think that would be more appropriate to go under the personnel committee. And my second concern is strategic plan. While it might come back to the Finance Committee for all of us to weigh in, I don't think it should just go under a strategic, I don't think the strategic plan should fall under, only under finance. It needs, in my opinion, needs to be broken up into different categories or go under general government and be brought back, because a strategic plan that we all sat through, and I don't think we've even approved it. that we all sat through, and I don't think we've even approved it, is is more than just finance. So while I think a lot of the issues do are under finance, I think there is quite a few other categories that are not viewed under finance or asset management. So I would ask that that be revised.
Yeah, let me address the the comments. The the strategic plan is something that we sat through together and developed. I think that I'll say a shortcoming that I've seen, and I'll take the blame for this, is that we had the plan as in, and then we, you know, we don't take the time to reflect back on the plan, you know, how are we doing to plan? And in fact, Commissioner Griffiths said we never had a formal vote for the plan. I know a vote is here. We'll have a vote here in the month of January. But I would like to see the strategic plan, and the reason I put it assigned to a committee, to be a living document that all strategic plans are supposed to be a living document, most that I've seen, that I've experienced in my private sector like life, they they get developed, and then you don't do anything with them to see how you're doing the plan. I think that's more the case, you know, also the case in Livingston County. I just, so the reason why it was assigned to a committee was to make sure that we're assessing our progress to plan, that we're, if we need to make a change to one of our objectives, because things do change, that we have the ability to change and and do it, I'd say, through the a standing committee process. Forget the other things that you had mentioned.
The compensation study, I think that should fall under personnel. Again, it might be brought back to finance. I guess here again, and maybe I didn't, maybe my interpretation is wrong. I I'm assuming by reading through this, there will be four people on finance rather than the full board.
Correct.
So I think that the compensation study and the strategic plan is better served by the entire board rather than just under members of four.
Well, ultimately, the the full board gets a to chime in on the on both the compensation study and the strategic plan. It just.
I agree with that. I just think maybe under the umbrella of, I just see those two under a different umbrella than finance.
Yeah, with regards to the compensation study, the, you know, my rationale for placing on another Finance Asset Management Committee is that, you know, our biggest asset is our, you know, our personnel. And it's a huge chunk of the budget, you know, wages, benefits, compensation, I believe it's sixty some odd percent of the budget.
I agree.
So, you know, in terms of that, that was my rationale for placing it into the Finance and Asset Management Committee. Anything else?
No, those were the two that really glare out to me that I I think are better placed somewhere else and then brought back for, as you've mentioned, we would all be voting on it. But I think it needs to be vetted out in a sub, a different subcommittee. I know it overlaps, but.
Commissioner Plank.
I'm just going to add on to what Commissioner Griffiths just said. I feel that with the strategic plan, I think that it should be more of a strategic plan as it relates to the areas that are within that that meeting purview. So any strategic plan that's related to, say, personnel, it should say that it's under the Personnel Committee. Strategic plan under general government as it relates to EMS equalization and all those other things. So I don't think that we can, I don't think it's necessary to have it in one. I think it would be good to have it in all of them, that there's discussions for the strategic plan in all of those subcommittee meetings because it affects everybody. So I I would make a suggestion to make that change. And then as it relates to the compensation study, I do agree with Commissioner Griffiths, too, that I think that is a personnel issue, and and that one I can see moving over to personnel just because it's done by the human resources, and all of that kind of falls under that personnel. So I I do concur with what she said, with just that little bit of caveat that I brought up. The other thing that I'd like to address to you, and I I sent an email to you about, you know, Roberts Rules and Section C at the end, just saying that it is, my guess is it's the latest edition of Roberts Rules, and we just put that in there that way. As those change, it doesn't really, we don't need to go back year after year to put the addition in there. And let's see, was there anything else that I had? Let's see here. And this sort of got changed in your proposal, Commissioner Nakagiri, about the the call to public. For me, you know, in thinking about the call to public, being on this board for a year, I feel like it is very, very important to have the call to public, especially at the very beginning of a meeting, because you know, sometimes we get individuals who will come in and they they provide information. And even sometimes the commissioners do a great job participating in that and giving information that otherwise we may not have. And so I think it's good because it helps us when we're getting ready to vote. Maybe we were thinking one way, and that information actually helps us to change our mind. The the call to public at the second part of the meeting, I I feel that that's in a subcommittee meeting, I don't think that that's as necessary because I feel that that it's, the information was there, the vote has already been taken, and it's really just maybe expressing disappointment or joy, joyous moment for some and on the way that the vote went. And so for me, I do feel like the board meeting should have still the two the two call to publics. But I feel that in a subcommittee, we could really scale that back to just the first one. Because even like in a subcommittee meeting, if someone were to come to call the public, express their concern about something we're about to vote on, and let's say the vote doesn't go their way, and they're really passionate about it, they have that opportunity to come to the board meeting where that's going to come up again and express that same information to us again in the board meeting where the the whole, you know, all of the commissioners are present and be able to express their concerns and maybe get their their voices heard to maybe make a change or or go their way. But I really feel like if we could just make that change, or I'd like to suggest that change and for you guys to consider it. That's all I have. Thank you.
What, just for clarification, what specific change are you advocating?
That on all subcommittees, we have the first call to public, but remove the second call to public. But in the board meetings, we would have both call to publics.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Zajak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to respond because I think these are all very good points that have been raised by my colleagues, but I have a different take. With regards to first, the Compensation Committee and the Pension Debt, we're looking at $25 million approximately of of implication, if you will, with regards to the Compensation Study. I agree with you, Mr. Chair, that that our greatest asset is our employees. And so when we make a decision as a driving factor, we should be considering the overall implication on budget. And since this touches $25 million of a $50 million, I'm using round numbers, budget, it seems very important to me or very appropriate to me that it be in an asset management discussion. I also would say that in compensation, in the sense of a compensation study, I don't know the exact number of years, perhaps one of the electeds can tell me, but it's been about six, seven years since we've done a compensation study for nonunion. If that's correct, seven years. So it's been in personnel for seven years, and and nothing has happened. Also, with regards to pension debt, fifty fifty million-ish, depending on the day, forty forty to fifty million dollars in unfunded liability is a very, very large item, and it's been, again, part of personnel for as long as I know anyways. And we still have significant pension debt that needs to be addressed. If we look at the structure of this Finance and Asset Management Committee, it looks very strategic and longer term reaching. And if we compare that to the structure of general government or public safety, we see that, in my view anyways, is a an opportunity for departments to drive their needs and to get things accomplished within their within their departments. Whereas if we look at the asset management, it seems to be more the entire county moving in a direction. As we look at the strategic plan, there were some comments about how everyone should be involved in in the implementation of the strategic strategic plan, and I wholeheartedly agree. My question would be kind of in response to the questions, is who's going to drive that ship? We don't have a clear delineation of responsibility to move it forward. I would expect whoever's the chair and the members of this committee to take it upon themselves to to drive discussion amongst all departments. So if if the drain commissioner brings forward a $9 million project, it it's not in, it it should be considered in a totality of circumstances next to a clerk's proposal or a treasurer's proposal or a court's proposal and not in a in a silo so that full weight of the of the decision could be understood and vetted before the decision to approve or not approve it takes place by the full board. With regards to the call to the public comments, I wholeheartedly agree also as to the first call to the public. But I'm struggling to see how the rationale would change with regards to the second call to the public in the full board. I think the comments were that there was the decision was made and for the committee. So why would there be a need to necessarily address it immediately? There could be a follow up discussion. I see that the same to be true with regards to the full board. If if a decision's made by this board, in that moment, there will not be an opportunity to to change anything that's been done, but in the following meeting, motion for reconsideration or through an email to to a commissioner about a individual's passion or dissatisfaction with a decision certainly could could take place, as could our conversations as we walk to the parking lot. So I I see this plan as a very good improvement in terms of efficiency, not only for commissioners being able to focus on their work with regards to the direction of the of the county, but also being cognizant of our elected officials, our department leaders, our staff's time and energy, focusing one meeting in a committee and then a final approval where there may be additional questions, of course. There won't be the need for having staff to attend yet a third meeting to perhaps answer the same questions or or just to be there for purposes of approval. So I think this is very good to address our staff's time as well as commissioners' time. And I think that's all my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am I can't help but in in my mind, look at salaries and benefits under personnel and and think that the compensation study starts there. I think the the there's a there's a item, a line item underlying major expense review under your Finance Committee proposal, asset management. And I would, I would think that there'd be a dollar value assigned to that. What is, what does major mean? Is it under a thousand? Is it half a million? Is it a million, whatever? And and those things would need to then flow through that Finance Committee. So there may be some redundancy, but I certainly see where you're you're targeting some efficiency. What I don't see is this large bucket of money that Uncle Sam has dumped in our lab, which is ARPA. And I I truly believe that all ARPA requests, regardless of the department that they come from, need to be channeled through something like this Finance Committee, especially if we're going to have four commissioners standing on that. I would think that'd be an excellent source to channel that. Now, ARPA won't be there forever, but it's certainly going to be there for the next few years. And I I really think it needs to funnel through a Finance Committee. So with that said, I I'm I'm in general agreement with your are we calling this Nakagiri proposal? And would would be offering the following amendments to the proposal. One, that the compensation study originate through the Personnel Committee. Two, that every.
Want to take these one at a time, or you want to do them all at once?
Yeah, I think it would be better to to do if you have more. I guess maybe you can review the amendments you want to offer, but then we'll make they make a motion individually for them.
Two, that the strategic plan be included in every subcommittee once a month. Three, that the capital improvement plans originate in the general government meeting. That three, that ARPA money and request for funding through ARPA flow through the department head into with our administrator into the Finance Committee. And and finally, that the capital, did I mention the capital improvement plan? I did. Okay. All right. That's those are the four. Thank you.
I would go ahead and and have you ask that you offer, you know, amendments, you know, motions for each of those amendments individually, and and we'll see if there's support and then have discussion and vote.
But my first amendment was that the compensation committee, the compensation study originate in the Personnel Committee along with salaries and benefits.
Support.
Motion to amend to have the compensation study originate in the Personnel Committee. Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Plank. Any further discussion? Commissioners Ajax.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I hate to use the old adage, but if we do what we've always done, we'll get what we've always gotten. And I and I don't mean that an individual. I just believe that the driving force for each of our current subcommittees is the department heads. And I understand that our department heads like to lead, as they should, and they're very good at it. But I also understand they like to defer to commissioners to make longer term strategic decisions, as I believe they also should. So I think they've done a nice job balancing that. But I think the net result is the drive for longer, bigger projects does not necessarily easily come from departments, not because they are not capable, but because they rely on us as the Board of Commissioners to drive the strategy and the future direction of of this of this county. And so I think that putting this in personnel, you know, you know, I think there is an opportunity that it gets left behind or gets delayed. And we're looking at a situation where at the end of the year, we'll have to decide on a COLA again. And we'll have to go through the same process that we've gone through because we don't know what the proper compensation structure is. Whereas if it's in a committee that is tied to driving strategy, driving long term decision making, that I I just believe that process will be cleaner. And by the way, it's a very large asset, $25 million of our $50 million budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
In in my understanding here, see, what we're trying to do is we're trying to separate these twins and make them both live. See, before it was clear that these sort of compensation studies would start in their individual things, but they always came to finance. So the question is, when we take away the broad umbrella from finance, which Mitch Zajak is is advocating for, then if if everything starts there, because everything is financial, then there's no reason for the other committees. It seems to me that if it it starts in personnel, that some of these things must of necessity go through finance, which is the status quo position, which I understand. But the the way that we're setting up, you know, is we're setting up silos instead of teamwork or a flow of of information. And it seems to me that that the origination should be in personnel, but this is a definite concern for. concern for what will still be called the finance committee. So in my mind, there is going to be a growing use of this new plan. And let's take the good of both of them and make it work together. That's, that's what I would say. That's who's in my favor. You know, Commissioner Smith's resolution, it should start there. But of course, finance should talk about it, but how do we, how do we make things start one place and then always have to go to finance without going back to our original thought of what the finance committee does? Everything goes through, everything used to go through the funnel or through the filter of finance committee. And, but if we're dividing up the way we are, it seems to me that the way, the place that they start should be the same place that it used to be. That's all I'm saying. Without, but I think finance should, that there be, should be some things that go through finance, you know? So I, I agree with, with both of you, but I can only vote one way. So.
Any other commissioners, Commissioner Reader?
I was just pointing out Commissioner Griffith, she had her hand up.
Anybody else would like to talk before me?
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention that our strategic plan, which if you recall, our strategic plan retreat, we spent a great deal of time and the competitive compensation did come out of our human resources. It was one of our strategic areas. So I'd like to keep it there. Ultimately, we'll have to go to finance.
Are there any other commissioners that haven't spoken to the issue yet? Commissioner Reader.
When I look at this, of course, there are all the departments that first come into us through a committee. And we have them all divided up between general government and public safety, infrastructure, and then personnel. And that gives the opportunity for the directors to come in and tell that committee where they want to go with their department, which is a little different than coming into committee of four commissioners that are dealing just with these particular areas. I think strategic plan needs to be started in all of these committees. It should be foremost in what the departments are coming in to get. It has to do with ARPA funds. It has to do with general fund. It has to do with future expansion of the county, everything. But it has to start with those department heads. So I think the strategic plan needs to be addressed by all these committees. If you want to have a driving force through the finance committee, I can see that. A lot of it depends on who you have for chair people in these committees. Those chair people should know what the board wants in the way of a direction to comply with strategic plan. A lot of which we've talked about, what we haven't implemented. I don't see where, through the whole year, we've really put that first. And maybe that's a goal that we all need first. And I agree that everything needs to come together in the end and be pushed. And maybe the finance committee is the pusher. But it has to start someplace else. It has to start with these committees. And they have to be able to go to those commissioners assigned to those committees and say, hey, I got a problem here. I need to discuss it before we get to finance. So I would be in favor of Commissioner Smith's agenda. Or I'm sorry, of his amendments to this. I think it's a good plan overall. I just think we're going to have to tweak it as we go along. I don't see any reason why we can't adopt it and then change it along the way if it's not working. Because it was made at a time when we had different mix of commissioners, different mix of department heads. A lot of things weren't getting done on time. I get that. But I think we're in a different position these days. So that would just be my comment on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Reader. Any other commissioners who haven't spoken to the issue once?
Yeah, I want to chime in on the discussion. I probably should have done this off the bat, but I wanted just to share some, let's say, broad perspectives on, you know, why I took the time to put this together. And that really was to provide a, I'll say enhanced efficiency in how we get things done. It was, it has been my observation that virtually all resolutions that get introduced, you know, at the first committee and they, in our current business cycle, then it goes to finance, then goes to full board. When, you know, once it gets approved at finance, it, it is approved at the full board. And so, and, and because finance committee is, you know, all nine of us and the board is all nine of us. I, I saw that as an opportunity to take a committee and repurpose it to, to things that are more long-term, more strategic in nature, the things that tend to get forgotten about because they're not necessarily today's hot burning issue. In fact, you know, I was talking to one of the commissioners, you know, about strategic items, you know, one was, well, you know, what, what are we doing with the, the property that is for sale across the road? You know, I mean, it and, and I said to my, I said in that conversation, wow, I didn't know we had property. And so, so it's, it, it's just an example how things get forgotten about. Another thing that, you know, that had been brought to my attention, you know, and my first term on the board was, you know, would we, would we have entertained plans at some time to transfer the Brighton Court and, and centralize them all at, you know, with all the other courts are? And that one, you know, escaped my thought process. I, I just think these major issues deserve a, a committee to start chipping away at them and keep the focus there so that, you know, whatever it is, three, four, or five years from now, we said, oh, man, what are we going to do about that court building? We, you know, we, you know, I, 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 I think we're better served by having a committee with direct responsibility and, and driving the strategic agenda. Most of the things that get put in front of us are put in front of the board of commissioners by, I'll say, individual department heads or countywide electeds. And they, they know their departments. They know their needs. And so when there, something comes up that's not in the budget, you know, currently that we need to get in the budget and get approval, and those things come in front of the board and I, I'm going to say 99, if not, 99.9% of those get approved. And so I'd say, why, why take, you know, the extra step? So with regards to the, the, the compensation plan, you, you could argue as, as my colleagues have about putting in a personnel and as I, I put it into finance because of the size of the asset. It's a decision that's going to impact us for years. You know, in, in, in personnel, we, we do address wages, you know, there are votes on bringing people in at, you know, above, you know, step two, you know, for specific, you know, I'll say reasons based on, you know, individual circumstances. I, I just see the, the the whole wage study and implementation, something that's going to impact us for years and years, something that's a huge asset. And that's, that's my rationale for placing it where I, I did. The, I think this schedule better meets the needs of, of commissioners who have a day job. I, I, I don't have that day job, but I know others do. And I'm cognizant of that. And I, I want to have a, a, a schedule that works good for everybody. And so that was, that weighed into this proposal also. And, and I, I do think this is also addresses, you know, efficient use of staff time. So, you know, we will have fewer meetings. You know, not having the traditional finance committee meeting. And I, I think that the time that the staff would spend addressing our meeting needs can be focused elsewhere, I, I think is a good thing too. So I, I just wanted to share those thoughts with my colleagues and open it up for a second round of follow-up conversation. And actually, we, we do have the, we, we are, and I like the conversation getting drifted off, but so are, are, what, what is the amendment that we are actually voting on?
Study to personnel.
Okay. So any further discussion on the compensation study to be started out in personnel? See, Commissioners Ajax.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up on a couple of items, you know, the finance committee as it exists today is merely a title. It was created, as I understand, for purposes of paying bills on time. The, the full board of commissioners must consider the financial implications of any decision that comes before the board for final implementation. And, and that's where the teamwork approach comes in. We, we don't ask that there be the teamwork approach in the sense of all nine people considering the first request of, I'm going to pick on the drain commissioner because he's in the second row, but the drain commissioner bringing something forward in, in the subcommittee. We trust that, that the, the committee that is most impacted, which is the subcommittee that, to which they're designed, the Public Safety and Infrastructure Committee. They have that purview to vet the initial discussion, to prepare it for going to the full board for that ultimate decision on budget impact on the community, whatever the other list of items on an individual resolution may be. So the notion that finance must be there in order to vet the financial implications, it, it's not so. It's there to pay the bills today. So we, we shouldn't, in my view, consider whether or not an item has financial implications to be the question. The question should be, and I think it was articulated by Commissioner Nakagiri, the longer term strategic implications of something. I know we'll get into this in the strategic plan, but it, I think it fits here as well in the sense of we make a decision on compensation or any other item that is presented to any committee, it must go after that initial introduction, the initial questions. It must go then to the full board to make that final decision. So to, to say it because an employee is involved, because it's compensation, and that's why it should be in personnel. To me, it holds no greater weight than saying there's dollars involved, so it should start in finance. And this doesn't box to me. There's a bigger purpose. There's a bigger reason, and there's a bigger opportunity than, than again, keeping it in a place where it's been and isn't necessarily, in my view, the strategic best location for it. And, and I would echo Commissioner Reader's comments that if we try it and it's not good, at any point in time, any commissioner, as, as always been the case, could bring forward their own resolution that would then alter the board rules and, and we could adjust it. But for now, because of this, its size, I, I believe the compensation should stay in the strategic asset management finance committee structure. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything else before we vote? So we have a amendment to, could you read back the amendment?
Commissioner Smith made a motion to amend the rules to move the compensation, to have the compensation study originate in the personnel committee. And that has been supported by Commissioner Plank.
So all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
And the motion passes five to two. Were there other amendments that either Commissioner Smith or others wanted to offer?
If I can continue with my list, Mr. Chairman.
Can, excuse me, I hate to interrupt. I just want to seek clarification. I only heard one nay. Is there a one nay meeting?
Cause I was too loud, sorry, Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I voted.
Okay. You, you voted nay as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
I was hoping my volume would carry, but
Thank you.
We're not the British Parliament.
Commissioner Smith.
If I can make a second motion to amend the Nakagiri plan where capital improvements would originate in general government?
So the motion is to have capital improvement initiated in general government. Is that the motion? Okay. Is there support? So we have a motion from Commissioner Smith, support from Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion? Commissioner Helsner.
Sure. It seems to me that, that capital improvement for a particular project is one thing. It seems to me that a capital improvement for for he, any department should first of all come through the committee of that department. Anything that's with a capital improvement plan overall, I think should stay in the finance, you know, it's, I, I think it's more how, how we're you know, the capital improvement plan is obviously under the, the finance committee. But in practical terms, when it comes to be used, then that should come through the, the particular committee. So I don't see a need for this. I think it'll naturally happen the way Commissioner Smith says, without changing any of the words. That's kind of how I picture it. So I don't see the need for this change.
Any other commissioners with Commissioner Plank?
I, I am going to support its staying in the finance asset management committee meeting. And the reason for, for, for that is I feel like the capital improvement plan, it should be looked at overall. And to have that 30,000 foot view to see where we are in the plan, to see what's coming up, what are things that are unplanned, that have to get thrown in there to make a decision. So I feel that you're going to have people coming to the different subcommittees already asking for certain things. But I really believe that it should stay in the finance meeting because I feel we need to look at that as an overall, that coming from a meeting that we had not long ago, asking these exact questions, where are we? How do we push somebody through? What if we want to make a change to the way the capital improvement plan is being rolled out today? Do we want to make some improvements there? So I, I do feel that that one should really stay in this, in this finance asset management meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Other comments from commissioners?
I, I'm going to chime in. I, I think when something gets, this is really a hybrid really of what I think Commissioner Smith is saying is, you know, the, the various departments, you know, know what their capital needs are. But the county as a whole, you know, we, we have to make a decision. We have to prioritize. We have to kind of meld those individual requests into a whatever that makes best sense from the, for the county. And I, so yeah, certainly, in my opinion, you know, specific capital improvement requests would still be forwarded by individual departments. But I think to, you know, decide, you know, what's in the strategic interest of the county as a whole, not just to say individual department, you know, I, I see that better fit, you know, into the asset management. So for that reason, I, I, I'll be voting no on the amendment.
I, I'm going to get the verbiage wrong here. I think it's a point of interest.
Commissioner Smith, people in, attending remotely are having a hard time hearing you. Can you please make sure to speak directly in your microphone?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So I believe it's a point of interest, but I, I, your, your points are all well thought out. I'm I think the key word was said was unplanned. We, we approve a capital budget. We approve a budget. I'm, I'm, I, I suffer through Mitch's anguish over what value the finance committee brings. And I think that's where it's going to need to bring value is on the unplanned, the unapproved, previously unapproved items. I'm more than willing to withdraw the motion. I just I would really like some clarity as to I, I'm used to dealing in dollars. What, you know, what dollar value are we talking about here? And if we've, if we've approved a budget and we've approved capital improvement plan, then really the then really, outside of the checks and balances of a Finance Committee, which is, which is kind of a must, shouldn't it be directed at the unplanned, unscheduled capital improvements, unanticipated costs, overruns greater than the contingency of $25,000, et cetera? I know I'm hashing out a lot here that, you know, maybe should have been handled outside of Committee. I apologize, but.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure how to answer that question. In terms of, we have a motion on, a motion to amend on the floor, and so I want to keep the discussion on that, you know. Could there be a dollar figure on there? Yeah. Could we find out what that is in practice? Yeah, could we set that dollar figure today? Yeah. I mean, those are all amendments. But so, the amendment on the floor is whether or not we want to initiate, you know, the capital improvement through the General Government Committee. Other discussion on the amendment? Commissioner Griffiths?
I'm going back to our Strategic Plan again, which, you know, we haven't, as a whole, passed. But if we are going to stick with one of our strategic areas of finances, then I would be in favor of leaving the capital improvement where it is, because in our capital improvement planning, which was one of our strategic areas, we do have here, Livingston County has multiple buildings and capital equipment that require maintenance or replacement. Many of these large capital projects that would require an appropriation or may even require bond issues, if that's what we're talking about under capital placement. I think, I think, you know, some of this is kind of what's our definition. We're all thinking different things. But if that's what, if that, right there, what I just read, is what the capital improvement plan is supposed to be on, under Finance, then I'm okay leaving it under Finance.
Yes, I would say that's, it's a decent definition.
I think we're kind of getting into semantics here in terms of terminology, but, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? So, we have a motion to amend and support. All those in favor of having the capital improvement start in General Government signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Motion to amend fails. Commissioner Smith, you had other amendments?
Yeah, finally. I know you're all glad to hear me say finally. I propose amendment to the Nakagiri Plan, which would have all ARPA requests, regardless of denomination.
Support.
So, we have a motion to amend to include all ARPA requests into the Asset Management Finance Committee. Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Zajak. Any discussion? Yeah, I, as, seeing that nobody is, has a, is kind of, has any point to bring forward. I had thought about how we're gonna handle ARPA. I had envisioned a special committee. But actually, hearing the discussion, I think this is the special committee that, you know, would, is well-suited to handle that task. So, I'm in full support of Commissioner Smith's amendment. Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment passes. Any other discussion, amendments?
I have a couple.
Commissioner Helsnerman?
Well, first of all, on the times of the meetings, we're moving our first meetings to, from 5:30 to 6:00. I would move that, that we move the second tier of meeting time to 7 o'clock instead of 7:30. So, in the event that we have a short first meeting, we have less time to wait for the second meeting.
Before you make that motion to me, or before I ask for a second for that motion, I had a discussion with the county administrator right before the meeting today. And we thought that if the schedule of the meetings were, the first one, Committee, we have two Committee meetings on an evening. The first one starts at 6:00, and the second one starts at the conclusion of the first one.
Should we then not put that on our schedule then?
Well, I'd just say that the meeting would be on the schedule, but the.
No, no, I mean on the schedule here.
Correct, yeah.
That, that, that is, however we do it, because 7 o'clock would not, because sometimes we might have a 15-minute meeting, so.
Yes, yeah. And in my conversation, the, yeah, I think the, if we specify a specific time, then we run into, you know, Open Meetings Act issues. Hey, you didn't specify, I mean, you're doing it at any non-specified time. But if the specified time is at the conclusion of the first one, I, we believe we're clear of legal obligations.
So, are we, okay, just so everybody knows that, when they see that, they'll have to make their own judgment as to how long the first meeting is gonna be to tune in for the second one. Okay. So, I would, I would just move, or I don't know if we need to, that we, instead of having a time for the second meeting, to say, starting upon the conclusion of the previous meeting.
Is there a second?
Second, Reader.
Motion by Commissioner Helsnerman, support by Commissioner Reader. Any additional discussion? All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Amendment passes. Commissioner Helsnerman, did you have?
Yes, I have another one if I could, or I can let somebody else, and then we can come back to me, if you wish.
Stick with you. What's that? You have the floor.
Okay, in the, there's been some discussion about the second call to the public. And I would move that we have one call to the public at the beginning of the meeting, as said, for our Committee meetings. But for the, whenever the full Board is sitting, either Committee of the Whole or the full Board is meeting, that we have a second call to the public. And I would suggest that that second call to the public be for two minutes. That's how I would, that's part of my amendment. I have some other comments beyond my amendment.
Is there support?
Support, Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Helsnerman, support by Commissioner Plank. I was gonna give the clerk time to, did you, Clerk Conley, did you get that?
Let me read back what I have, just so that I'm not putting in my own words. Commissioner Helsnerman is making a motion to amend that with Subcommittee's or Committees, there will be one call to the public. But for full Board, there will be two call to the publics with a two-minute limit for the second call to the public.
Yes.
For clarification, it's three minutes for the first one.
Yes, right.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to talk to you about this. I, before the meeting, I called Chris Toby. And I would like to have a clearer and a more concise way of the public communicating to us. It seems to me that I get some communications directly to me, and some come through Natalie. With the call to the public, I think that, I think that we should make it very clear that there are different ways, if, if the three minutes and two minutes are not enough for them, that they're always welcome to send us extended comments by email, and this is how you do it. We are, we are, we are here for the public. We're here to hear from the public. And we need to make that as easy for them as possible, so they don't have to look all over creation to find it. So, yeah, I, the call to the public is my favorite time of the meeting, you know. No matter how long, I love it, but I don't, I haven't fallen asleep yet, so.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Amendment passes. Any further discussion or amendments before we, Commissioner Griffiths?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to bring back under Finance Strategic Plan. I would like to make an amendment that that Strategic Plan would be developed through the Subcommittee. Knowing that Strategic Plan, a large portion of our Strategic Plan, if the one that we've discussed and worked on will be adopted, is related to Finance, but many of this is also related to Subcommittee. And we did have in our Strategic Plan, we discussed that upon approval, elements of the Strategic Plan would be discussed each month by the Administrator and the Commissioners. So, I think by taking it out of the Whole, under just Finance, we could leverage our Strategic Plan and stay on task better if we break that into the Subcommittee's. That would be most appropriate.
Can you word that into an amendment?
Yes, I would amend the Finance Asset Committee to allow for this Strategic Plan to be covered under the appropriate categories of corresponding Subcommittee's.
Support. I'll, we'll move forward when I see the clerk stop furiously writing.
Okay, just to read back for clarification, it's a motion to amend with the Finance Asset Management to allow the Strategic Plan to be developed under the appropriate Subcommittee.
Correct.
With support by Commissioner Helsnerman.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Commissioners Zajak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, first, I see this issue the same as what we just considered with regards to the capital improvement plan in the sense that, as a collective overall driving force of a strategic plan, if we make mini cooks in the kitchen, I'm not sure who we see as driving that forward. I guess if, if we're talking about each month, using the wording of the draft Strategic Plan, the Administrator discussed with the Commissioners, is, are we saying then that Administrator Byrd is now in charge of implementing our Strategic Plan? And if, and if that's the case, I don't agree. I think that, in the same way, we would have a driving force for the capital improvement plan be in this Committee, the driving force of the Strategic Plan would be in the Committee, and then individual projects that are being addressed, of course, would have the likelihood, as long as they're narrow in that sense, that they would go to the Committee. The Department impacted by the Strategic Plan item was seeking approval, in theory, it would go to that Committee. But the overall force of, we have a Strategic Plan meeting that's conducted by the Chair, the Vice Chair, the Administrator, as well as our Strategic Plan partners. Then all of the electeds come, and then we have all of the Department Heads come, and we brainstorm, and we come up with this piece of paper. The question becomes to me, if it's not centrally located in a Committee, who will then take the charge to see to it that those very important projects and categories of things are moving forward? Essentially, my question is, who will ask, you know, what's the status? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I could address this issue. At the top, it says matters reviewed by the Finance Asset Management Committee. I think there is no problem of these ideas of the Strategic Plan being reviewed by other Committees. But I picture a big snowball, and I picture one person pushing it, or I picture four people pushing it. And we're more likely to move the snowball forward if we have four people, four Committees pushing it, and when one person is taking a break, the other one's saying, come on over here and help me. Let's get this moving forward. I think the Strategic Plan is much more likely to actually get implemented and approved. We've never done that. Get approved if we have more people trying to push it in their, you know. If, it just seems to me like I'd like to have a lot of people pushing it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Reader?
I guess I'd like to hear from the Department Heads, at least the ones that are here, who are listening very intently to what we're talking about. If they would like to chime in, I'd love to hear what they have to say, and anybody else that's on Zoom. That's a Department Head that would like to chime in about this. I think it's important.
Before we ask for Department Head feedback, let me go through the first, at least the first round of comments from Commissioners. Anybody else? Was that it, Commissioner Reader?
That's it.
Any other comments on the? I'm gonna just chime in. I see the Strategic Plan, you know, similarly as the Capital Improvement Plan, you know, that it's, the Strategic Plan is for the whole county. I think when we, you know, if we're going to amend the Strategic Plan, you know, and then push forward a resolution to the full Board to, you know, change, because we find that times have changed, objectives have changed, you know, the circumstances are different, and therefore, something we had in our Strategic Plan from a year ago, you know, this just doesn't make sense. There's higher priority things to do. I think that one Committee ought to champion that. That one Committee, if it's, if it's, I'll use an example of, hey, there's an element in the Strategic Plan that deals with General Government Committee, or deals with the Sheriff's Department, which actually would be Public Safety Committee, that certainly, it would be incumbent upon the Finance Asset Management Committee to make sure that a change to the Strategic Plan is not going to negatively impact the Sheriff's Department, or, you know, get in the way with what the Sheriff had in mind. So, I, I think, I would still, I'll be voting against amending. I think it just makes sense that to have the Strategic Plan be looked at as in a holistic countywide endeavor. So, with that being the last comment in the first round, if there's any Department Heads or electeds that have any thoughts that they want to share on this amendment, you're welcome to chime in.
Well, I'm gonna take advantage of that invitation, quite frankly. I can tell you, as an elected official, the adoption of a Strategic Plan, whether it be on the, you know, it's gonna come to the whole Board for adoption. That is a living, breathing document that's constantly gonna change. But we need the Board of Commissioners to tell us where we're driving the bus. Right now, the bus is going radically down the road. It's very important and a high priority to me to have a Strategic Plan adopted, even if it's amended along the way. Just give us some driving direction so that we know which way we are to steer our bus. I am here and accountable to all of the voters in this county, and my goal is to do the very best I can. And you've always been supportive as the Board, but we, as the, and I'm gonna speak on behalf of all countywide electeds, we need to know where the priorities of the Board are so that we're steering in a similar direction. So, I would appreciate having a Strategic Plan adopted as one of the highest priorities for this Board of Commission. So I would appreciate having a strategic plan adopted as one of the highest priorities for this Board of Commission. And then, once it's adopted, if you want monthly reports, um, whether that be at the subcommittee level, um, but part of the plan, you can designate which part of the strategic plan that area would report to, then have an update at a committee level. But let's all get going on one direction, steering this bus together for the good of all of the residents. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank, um, Commissioner Reader. Any, anybody else?
I'm, I didn't see the structure they're proposing, so it's hard for me to, to comment on it, but as long as you're keeping that input, however it's done, of course, your time is valuable, so, um, to do it in a, in a way that doesn't consume all of your time, um, I think is important. So, basically, I'm gonna say either way.
Is, is my wife, uh, is she chatting for me to keep my mouth shut? She's on. Yeah, I, no, I appreciate it because a lot of your discussion is, is how to move forward and include, um, the departments in that and however you choose to do it. I don't have it in my head how you've proposed it, but I think, obviously, um, you need to make it work within your schedules. I will say from, from our standpoint, um, and from most of the departments, we see, um, we see our job as, um, one to protect this board. And, which is why we try to run interference and keep a lot of the complaints from coming directly to you. Because then the first thing you guys do is you're gonna call us and say, I don't know anything about this, why is this happening? And we can do that because of the support this board gives to us. So the more support we have, the more interference we can run and make sure that we are answering people's questions, so they don't feel like they need to go, um, you know, to the sport. So I guess, um, this is noncommittal, but whatever way works best for you, as long as you're including, uh, the department heads, I think they'll be appreciative of the process.
Thank you. I, I just wanted, did you have a?
Sure.
Ah.
I just wanted to briefly share my, uh, the way I look at strategic plans, because I think you'll be very impressed. When it gets adopted, I take Scotch tape and I tape it to my wall. And I look at it every single day and it's my to-do list. And so when we think about whose job is it to move this forward, it may or may not be my job here, but I'm going to treat it as if it's my job to move it forward. Because when you adopt a plan, that's your statement of your policy preferences. So you've done that part. And my job is to implement your policy preferences in conjunction with the department heads and the elected officials and others. So, um, if you think about the draft of the plan that you have now, it's different than other plans. It's not just a five-year plan. It actually is broken down into one-year task for three different, uh, topics. And so it's pretty specific. I, I don't know that we can get everything done in a year that's listed on the one-year plan, but I know that we'll try. And, uh, speaking for the department heads, they, they came up with a lot of the plan in conjunction with you all, so there's not gonna be any pushback on that. It's something that they want to do. It's something they want to strive for. So, um, I view it as an important document as well, and I view it as my job as the county administrator to make sure that we're, uh, making progress on that document. And however you want us to report on that, fine. If you want us to have a agenda item at every committee meeting, so be it. If you want it to go through asset management, that's fine too. Um, but I do want to let you know that it's an important document for me as an administrator because it's my to-do list. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I want to chime in on the discussion and just say that, um, play, you know, e- even at the county, and I haven't been here long, I've only been here for, uh, three years. Um, but, you know, in, in my previous, um, private sector life, you know, I'm familiar with strategic plans. What I've seen most of the time, if not all of the time, is that the plan gets in place and it, it is not frequently reviewed and, and updated and say, hey, do the, do these policy goals still make sense for the times we have today? And, and for me as, as Board Chair, I, I would appreciate a committee that was championing that specific, you know, thing. Because the, the strategic plan is ultimately what, what guides us. And, um, so if what we said was important, you know, when we developed the plan, is no longer important. I, I don't see that as the administrator's job to say, hey, you know, I'm not gonna do this anymore because it's not important. It's the board's job to say, hey, we're not gonna do that anymore because it's, doesn't make sense. And I, 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 I want the plan to be a more of a living document than I've seen in my past life. And that, and I see this, um, placing the plan under the, under this single committee, which is gonna, you know, not gonna work in a, in a bubble. It's going to reach out to the other committees, it's gonna reach out to the department heads, but have somebody champion that makes sure that we are reviewing it, uh, I'm gonna say quarterly. Does it make sense? The plan state, you know, that, uh, does it make sense that we're doing what we're doing? That, that's what I see the value out of, you know, one of the big values out of the finance and asset management committee. So, um, I'm desirous of, you know, um, having it, you know, um, updated and revised and looked at and assessed by a, by a single committee in, anyway. That's my two cents. Any other commissioners with comments, questions?
If no one else.
Or, or anybody else? All set? So what, oh, okay.
I like to make things simple, if I can. It's like making a cake. You get all the ingredients, but you still have to plan to make the cake. Otherwise, you just got a lot of ingredients. And I think that's what I'm hearing is, um, department heads and everyone else in the county needs us to say, you're gonna make that cake. And then we can rely on you to bring us the ingredients. I think if you had in a committee that had, uh, the heads of these standing committees to take it back to each one of these departments that we represent in those committees, I think that's going to help you if we did it once a month. Um, because we should have a pulse on those, um, departments that are under us in those committees to know what they want. So if you want to make it easy and simple, that would be kind of a way of doing it. Um, bring those chair people from those committees in and ask them on a monthly basis, where we, where are we in regards to the strategic plan? And are there problems or issues that we need to address? My estimation, it's like make a cake.
Are you?
I'm done.
Anybody else? Commissioner Griffiths?
So my thought process with taking it away from the finance asset managers, simply because what we have done in the past, uh, in terms of our goals for strategic plan, didn't always include something that, um, finance or asset management, that I don't think falls under that category. So that's why I am endorsing the, uh, we take it back to the individual committees, um, rather than just under one umbrella. And let me give you, for instance, one of our goals was to address the needs of an aging community. I don't see that falling under asset management, um, or a budget, so. A large majority of our strategic plan, of course, comes under finance ultimately, um, but I don't think everything does, so. I just wanted to point that out for clarity.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Griffiths? Commissioner Halserman?
Uh, yes, uh, I think we need to set a date for adoption of the strategic plan. We've done a lot of talking, but it doesn't make any difference what committee does it if we don't have a strategic plan. So, uh, it seems to me, uh, that by the end of February, we should be able to vote on a strategic plan. I, you know, why don't we have a plan to vote on the strategic plan? Then that's kind of off, you know, off, off the subject here, but, you know, I've been here five years and we've been trying for five years to get a strategic plan and I don't think it's happened yet, so.
Um, let me go and make a comment, then I'll, I'll, um, turn the floor over to Commissioners A.J. With regard to the strategic plan, you know, um, Lou Bender sent us, you know, a, um, a summary of what we agreed to or what he, um, had wrote, written in his note is what we agreed to as a strategic plan. And if I'm not mistaken, that was emailed out to all commissioners. Am I, I'm looking at Commissioner, or I'm looking at Administrator Bird.
Oh, I'll send the draft we have again. What, what we did is we took Lou's, uh, chronicle from that day, designed it into a format that looks like a plan. Um, I shared it with everybody in November, um, elected officials, staff, commissioners. I had two pieces of feedback, which we can discuss as a group. They were very minor. Um, other than that, there was no other requested changes. So I think we're really close to having something to vote on. Um, and I'll send that out again, uh, for you to look at it, but, uh, what format we, what committee we introduced that in, um, will be up to the, the, the chair, I guess, and the chair people of the different committees. But I think we have a document that's pretty much ready to go.
Commissioner Plank.
Thank you. Um, you know, I'm sitting here and, um, I'm sort of like going back and forth, back and forth on where I think it should be. And my initial thought was, yeah, it should be in all the subcommittees. But I think what we need to understand is like, what is the role of the strategic plan in each one of these, um, subcommittees? So it's real obvious when you have the strategic plan in the personnel committee and how the strategic plan fits into those areas that relate to personnel. It's easy to understand when it's in general government, how it relates to all of the different areas in there. The role in the finances may be a little different than it would be for personnel, for general government health and public safety. So maybe the role of what that committee does is different than what these groups are doing. I think that would sort of satisfy almost everybody on the board, at least that's my, you know, my hope. Um, and the, the matters to be reviewed by the fin- finance asset management as, as it relates to strategic plan would be more of an overview of the plan and any changes to the plan mid-year or later on, um, and driving, um, uh, sort of the bigger picture of what that means. And the subcommittees could be funneling that information into that, um, into that subcommittee so that you, this committee can make, um, uh, you know, maybe some decisions on what to do at that point when you have all these changes. So maybe it's just the role of what, what they're trying to do. So I'm, 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 I'm saying that's like a compromise to the different things that I'm hearing from each person on the, on the board. So, thank you.
Commissioners A.J.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I agree. I think with Commissioner Plank, I mean, it's the same way that we turned out with leaving the capital improvement plan in this committee. Uh, I think naturally the subcommittees of general government, public safety, personnel, it's already intrinsic in their, in their existence to, uh, carry forward requests that would be brought forward by a, a department into their committee. So, um, when I see strategic plan, again, this is just a very large 30,000-foot view, kind of summary of what falls within each of these different committees. But when it says strategic plan, I see the responsibility for the strategic plan going forward being in this committee. Not necessarily the nuts and bolts of how equalization's, uh, role in the strategic plan will be implemented. Um, that seems to me to certainly fall within the purview of the other committees. So, uh, without, without, uh, I'm gonna use Commissioner Halserman's snowball analogy. Without the first person to pack the first snowball and start it rolling, I don't see how any other person could jump on and help to push. Um, and I, I, I heard your comments too, Commissioner Halserman, with regards to the five years and, and the importance of, uh, that, uh, Madam Clerk implement or put forward in her comments about, uh, moving forward with the strategic plan. Uh, we've yet to have somebody solely responsible for seeing that through, and I see that what, is what happens in this, um, the finance and asset management committee. Uh, again, the nuts and bolts of how that is done will be decided by the bigger group and then ultimately approved by, uh, the full board after the input of all the, the relevant parties. And then last but not least, drawing on the corporation, private sector point of view, I, I don't think we would see a company, which is what Livingston County is in terms of its operations, um, delegating strategic plan responsibility to move piece by piece forward. There would be somebody within this, uh, organization that would push the overall strategic plan to go, and I, and that's what I see this finance asset management committee, uh, playing the role as. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, if you would read the amendment back, so, um, you know, we're voting on?
An amendment to Commissioner Nakagiri's proposed plan for the fin- finance asset management committee to allow this strategic plan to be developed under the appropriate subcommittee. Um, it was moved by Commissioner Griffith and support by Commissioner Halserman.
All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
It was a three nays?
Clarification, three nays.
Commissioner Plank, uh, Zajak and Nakagiri, is I, did I get that correct? Uh, amendment passes. Any other discussion on, uh, amendments, um, before we vote on the, uh, proposed rules?
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So with that striking of strategic plan, uh, what is the proposal for strategic plan with regards to the other three remaining committees? I, I suppose that's an amorphous question, uh, but anyway, I, I, that's a topic that now needs to be discussed based on our last vote.
Um, that's a, um, of, I don't know. Yeah, um, Commissioner Griffith, that was, that was your amendment, yeah?
Yes, I foresee that the board at our next meeting should vote on the strategic plan and put that in place. Well, we've, we've talked about it, we've had it, they've discussed it. I, I think our county administrator, he takes the, the lead from us. We have it, but we haven't voted on it. Um, so, you know, we need that roadmap. And then I see that we need to go back to the departments that are part of that roadmap to see where they are or remind them or show them what we have as a group voted on, um, that will drive our roadmap for the next five years as we have done in the past.
Commissioner Reader.
I don't see that we took it out of the finance committee. I see that we added to it. So the finance committee would still be the driving force. It's just that you're going to also be able to have your standing committees try to help implement it as well. So it hasn't been removed from finance and put into the subcommittees. It's just been giving the subcommittees permission to try and develop it as well, but it always comes back to finance. Is that the way?
I agree with that, yes. I, I agree with them.
Yeah, it's an addition.
Commissioners A.J.
So, Madam Clerk, can you read back to us the, the amendment that was just voted on? I'm, I, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Um, it was a motion to amend Commissioner Nakagiri's finance asset management committee to allow the strategic plan to be developed under the appropriate subcommittee.
Um, so if I, then, um, Commissioner Reader, so your, your comment was that it would come, details would come back to this finance asset management committee? Did I understand that right?
Absolutely.
Um, I just, I, I guess I have confusion there in the sense that as a subcommittee, there's no flow through the finance asset management committee any longer. I, I suppose if, if we've not, I, I misunderstood the vote and, and perhaps that may be the case, but I thought we were taking strategic plan out. If that is wrong, then, then I guess I'm satisfied, but I'm not sure that we will see a flow through, um, asset management. I, I think we can see driving force from the asset management, but I don't see that there's a flow through approval or vote or anything of this nature.
I, I would chime in with a clarification. I, I was, you know, getting the feedback from the various committees on various segments of the, of the, um, strategic plan, I think is a good thing, but to take the feedback a good thing. But to take the feedback from, you know, say, various committees and amalgamate it into a resolution to change something in the strategic plan, I think that would come through the finance committee. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Commissioner Reader?
Any other discussion? So we have a amended resolution. And all those in favor of supporting the new proposal for the rule signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We have a set of rules. Got to get back to the agenda. So we're to the second call to the public, item number 13 on the agenda. If there's anybody wishing to address the Board of Commissioners, I see Mr. Wright. If you have three minutes, just provide your name and city or township and you'll have three minutes. Well.
He was paying attention.
Yeah, okay.
I disagree with that, but that's the rules. Chuck Wright, any township? Soon, the Supreme Court's gonna take up the OSHA regulations for COVID testing. And I'd like to see the board bring up the resolution or some action. They tried a few months back stating the county's position and if they were gonna enforce OSHA regulations or not. And I think they need to move quickly as OSHA is gonna start issuing citations in November, or in February, I'm sorry. And I agree with your, or disagree with your two-minute limit now in removing second call to the public on all the subcommittee meetings.
Thank you. Anybody else, either in the room or on Zoom, wishing to address the board? Hearing and seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the call to public and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Halsman?
Motion by Commissioner Halserman, supported by Commissioner Griffith. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourned.